... of the city of Bloomington City Council, we'd ask if you'd stand for our pledge of allegiance at this time and then a moment of silence after. Thank you. Thank you. Clerk, if you go ahead and call the roll, please.
Councilmember Kearns?
Here.
Councilmember Mosley?
Here.
Councilmember Motney?
Here.
Councilmember Danenberger?
Here.
Councilmember Strazza?
Here.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Here.
Councilmember Ward?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Councilmember Scott?
Here.
Mayor Brady?
Here.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, then, do we have a public comment this evening?
We do. We received emailed public comment from Amy Indicott in Dakota Black, which was provided to council earlier today, and then registered to speak in person. We have 14 people. After your statement, we will start with Steve Butte and then follow up with J.W. Barnett.
Okay. Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, public comment is an opportunity for speakers to provide their views and feedback to the city council. It's an opportunity for the city council to listen and hear diverse points of view. To maximize the impact of public comment, in show respect for the expression of all viewers, speakers should maintain stability and focus on the city issues. Speakers must identify themselves for the record, but are not required to give their address. Each speaker is given the floor for three minutes, and the council does not respond or engage in debate. Any speaker that engages in disorderly behavior will be deemed out of order and their time ceased. So, Madam Clerk, if you call the first speaker.
Steve Butte?
Good evening. Thanks for allowing me to comment tonight. I'm Steve Butte. I'm from Wesley Methodist Church, and I'm a proud member there. A little back history of why I'm here, because I feel it's important. In February, I attended one of many immigration information events that Sergeant Kyle Nowers, a Bloomington community engagement officer, presented. Members of the media were present at that program that Sergeant Nowers gave at the public library. Since my church, United Methodist of Wesley, has several missions that serve our immigrant neighbors, I wanted our church to receive the same information. Sergeant Nowers and I arranged a date of August 13th, and I would send a confirmation invitation that I responded to in order to be placed on the calendar. This was planned as a church event, but open to anyone who wished to attend. We produced a flyer for the event, and after a week of it being distributed, were informed by Sergeant Nowers that the city found it inflammatory, and we needed to change it. We revised it more than once before Sue McLaughlin, the deputy city manager, sent final approval of our flyer. That was on August 7th, Thursday, August 7th. The morning of August 8th, I received a call from Kyle informing me that he had been ordered by Sue McLaughlin to not appear at our event. I understood him to say that the police department did not have a problem with his appearance at our event. We were fortunately able to secure another qualified speaker before our event the next Wednesday, so it did go on. I was ready to just forget about the city's actions until we heard Mayor Brady give an interview on WGLT where we felt he misled the public by giving false information. I am not insinuating the mayor lied, just that he was uninformed and misleading with his statements. First of all, the city did absolutely not cancel this event. It was not an event sponsored by the city. It was an event sponsored by Wesley United Methodist Church with a guest speaker from the Bloomington Police Department. Sergeant Mike Gardner of the Illinois State University Police, with the okay from the ISU president, was able to provide additional input that night that we had hoped we could get from Kyle concerning the law. Not once did the mayor try to contact our church, whose name was prominently displayed on our flyers as the sponsors of the program. I have provided you, or I will provide you if it's acceptable, with all the packets of information that were distributed at our presentation, along with Officer Nowers' job description as published on his LinkedIn account, and a copy of the email asking me to accept the invitation online, allowing Sergeant Nowers to appear, which also shows its ultimate cancellation. Tonight, I'm bringing you two major concerns that we have as members of the community. The first is why Sergeant Nowers was not allowed to present a program that he's given many times before, and second is our concern over Mayor Brady's misleading statements and lack of corrupt information.
Thank you. Can you bring your remarks to a close, please?
I'm, I'm definitely.
Are you done? Thank you very much.
Bring packets up to you?
I'm sorry? You can leave them with the clerk, if you would, right over here at the table. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next up is J.W. Barnett, and then to follow will be Pamela Rigenberg.
Good evening, City of Bloomington's Committee of the Whole and the surrounding community. My name is J.W. Barnett, and I'm the associate pastor at Wesley United Methodist Church. My comment, this public comment this evening, is to just provide My comment, this public comment this evening, is to just provide a recommendation that this committee of the whole worked towards reversing the decision to withhold Sergeant Nowers and the Community Engagement Unit from participating in planned events regarding immigration issues. I have three justifications for this. The first is that the Bloomington Police Department's Community Engagement Unit is focused on, and I quote, "positive and collaborative relationship between the Bloomington Police Department and our community as they," and I quote, "aim to foster trust, mutual understanding, and cooperation by addressing community concerns and improving public safety through proactive engagement and problem solving." The second justification I have for my recommendation is that the, and this again, I'm not trying to put words in people's mouths, but when I'm going on the Bloomington website, it does list it under the Bloomington Police Chief Jamal Simmington's second goal for 2024. I say 2024 because we have one for 2025, we have one for 2023, 2024 is the most recent. And it quotes, "to maintain community engagement output," so containing or continuing to maintain community engagement output, "and add public safety education officer to the Community Engagement Unit to vastly increase public safety education." My third justification for my recommendation is as follows, and it comes from the Bloomington, Illinois Police Department's 2025 to 2029 Strategic Plan, and it includes the following goals, not all the goals, but just two of them that I'm listing for you all this evening. Goal number four is "Community Engagement," as its title, which states that the Bloomington Police Department understands community engagement is essential for adequate public safety and promotes accountability, communication, collaboration, and trust, resulting in a safer, more resilient community and enhanced recruitment opportunities. And then the fifth goal is transparency, which states, "The Bloomington Police Department understands that transparency is critical to building trust and legitimacy in our community and internally with employees. Through transparency, through transparency, the Bloomington Police Department will work to increase communication, procedural justice, trust, and community relations." If I'm being critical of my own argument, that's my weakest point because it's only that little tack at the end there that actually talks about community relations. But just getting to my personal opinion on this matter, the decision made to withhold Sergeant Kyle Nowers of the Community Engagement Unit from engaging with the community, the specific reference being with Wesley United Methodist Church, is not in alignment, not in alignment with the Bloomington Police Department Strategic Plan for 2025 through 2029, and as such, is in need of immediate reversal. Since I do not hold a position on city council, I am relying on your knowledge and expertise as a member of the community to go ahead and reverse this decision in ways that are decent and necessary. And I'm just going to add this personal disclaimer for public record. I am a member of the reserves and none of my comments represents the United States Air Force or a position of the DOD. I don't want to say that, but it just feels like something to cover all bases, to cross my Ts and dot my Is. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Next up is Pamela Riegenberg, and then to follow will be Jill Whitaker. All right. We'll go ahead with Jill Whitaker.
Good evening. I'm Jill Whitaker. My husband and I own Shake It Up Cocktail Lounge and Eatery. We've met before. I'm understanding that there should be a presentation tonight on video gaming. I'm looking forward to it. I would have expected by now for this to become, come to a vote and so we can put this issue to rest. My husband and I have been in business now for three years. Our growth is exceeding what any bar restaurant would be doing in year three. I'm very proud of him. He works his tail off. We have a great following. We have an event space. The Bison love us. Our staff loves us. They show up even when they don't have to work. It's pretty special. That being said, our failure risk compared to our competitors is very high. And the reason that is, is because most of them, not some of them, most of them have video gaming and we do not. We sit at a waitlist now for a year and a half. Lots of lost revenue, and we can do those numbers if you really want to. Our failure risk is high. The average bar restaurant that has video gaming, that are our competitors, makes an extra $10,000 a month. Five to seven days a week open would be like $20,000. So that's $10,000 to $20,000 a month in extra revenue with no overhead. Pretty outstanding. You guys, we can't compete with that. There's no freaking way we can compete with that, and you know it. Some of you have been in banking. You know that that is impossible, that we will not be pushed out of a market eventually because we cannot compete. We will not be able to compete for competitive wages for our employees. We will not be able to compete to beautify our space. We won't be able to compete with them to update our equipment. They will all beat us and it will not be our fault. It will not look like, it will not matter what our profit margins look like for our food and beverage, which is what the business that we're in, because they will push us out. It's inevitable. The other thing is, this came to my attention this week, is that the city allowed a transfer of a gaming license from one old bar owner to a new bar owner. Now, that new bar owner, I'm pretty sure I know, but doesn't have any experience in the bar industry. They wanted those games. Cool, they got them. They did not have to wait 12 months like the rest of us to apply for a gaming license. And they skipped the waitlist and they removed right to the top and now they have their games. Cool, good for them. Whoa. Awesome. So, that being said, you guys keep allowing that. Bars are just going to keep changing hands over and over and over and over again. And that waitlist, it's not going to move. And it won't matter if those restaurants on that waitlist are winning and succeeding. They will eventually struggle and they will be pushed out. And it will not be their fault. It will be the city of Bloomington's fault. This is not a joke. It's not a game. This is our life savings. We're self-employed. Wrap your heads around that. I'm 46 years old, guys, and I'm being punished for taking risks. It's not okay. Your city expects more from you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Next up, we have Mark Adams, and then to follow will be Mark Klaus.
Don't need to say my name. Mark Adams. I live here in Bloomington, Ward 8. I know a lot of faces here. You know me as president of Bloomington Normal Camellia Trust, as well as I'm a graduate of ISU. I have my master's in urban planning and policy from the UIC, and just recently obtained my American Institute Certified Planner's Certification. I say that just for credentials purposes, not to pat myself on the back. During the work, during my workday, I'm constantly talking with businesses and the need for more housing solutions. So I'm really excited for tonight's presentation. But what I really want to do is just again, make another plug for the need for an affordable housing trust fund. That can be a collaborative effort between the city, town, and county, or it can be just simply one municipality, just depending on what the appetite is. But the reason why we continue to see affordable housing be an issue, and the reason why we continue to see on house population just stay where it is, in fact, grow, is just because we do not have affordable housing. We have a significant lack of a safety net there. So to kind of give the full picture, we know that there's really only two constant creators of affordable housing in the community outside of the low-income housing tax credit space for multifamily. And of course, one is well-established and on a good year Habitat. Being that first entity will produce three to five homes on a good year. As of, I believe, two years ago, their waitlist was over 200. And so that, again, is being, I'm painting that as one of the main pictures in terms of affordable housing, but also consider the growing need. And then, of course, the Bloomington Normal Community Land Trust. We are looking at doing the rehab component. There's not a nonprofit in Bloomington Normal that does rehab, let alone does rehab and affordable housing. So we're really striving to do both. And since that council presentation we presented earlier this year, happy to report that we've raised about 22,000 in the last six months from individual givings, as well as two corporate donations, and we're continuing to fundraise. All of those dollars are going towards the first home that we would acquire, rehab. And then, of course, if you're familiar with the model, we would sell the home but lease the land through a 99-year ground lease for an income-qualified buyer between 60% to 100% AMI. And to put that into occupation terms, that's your teachers, firefighter, policemen, that's your entry-level workers at Farrow and Rivian, making basically middle-class income, but really are not able to compete in this kind of housing market because they have to compete with several bids. So I consider you can create and look into an affordable housing trust fund. It can serve multiple purposes, multiple entities. It would really help us. It would help Habitat and others, and encourage you to reach out if you have any questions. So thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Thank you. Next up is Mark Klaus, and then to follow will be Tyson Moore.
All right. Good evening. My name's Mark Klaus and I'm bringing multiple different perspectives to share my thoughts tonight. I've been a resident of Bloomington more than 30 years, a married father of four kids. I'm an HOA officer. I'm a licensed real estate agent, and I'm also the county board representative for District 10, which encompasses the Towanda Barnes and GE Road area of one of the five new walkable centers being proposed in the missing middle housing proposal. So although we may have a problem needing more housing options, the answer is not creating new problems disrupting current areas. The vast majority of residents within an HOA bought the property with an understanding of what can and can't be done to or on the property, having some certainty for their futures. Now, for the city to try changing the existing rules would have drastic negative impacts on these areas. So a new walkable center may work. I don't know. It could. But it needs to be in an area that can benefit from it. I'm specifically focused on the Towanda Barnes and GE Road area that is simply not a good fit. Residents didn't buy homes in this area hoping that soon we wouldn't need a car and could just walk for all of our needed services. Bloomington Normal is not a large metro area. It doesn't seem like the cookie cutter approach from the consulting company proposed and numerous other larger metro areas is a good fit for our town. One of the most obvious reasons is our Midwestern weather doesn't seem conducive to a walkable center versus more moderate climate areas. Where a lot of these places work, it's nice. It's cold, it's hot, it's raining. People don't want to walk here. We've tried some non-traditional building approaches in areas around town and they just aren't as popular or sell as well as the more traditional subdivisions. Money follows good ideas and we've had many residential and commercial property developers, and these developments haven't happened yet. Who actually wants to live in these new proposed areas? Many people might respond to a survey, but they actually will voice their real opinion by their pocketbook and what they choose to pay for. So people move here from large metro areas like Chicago for a less stressful life and more of the quote "American dream of a house with a yard for their kids and pets to enjoy," not multi-story, multi-family housing units. We can certainly add more of those multi-family housing, but not within established, single-family subdivisions. My concern is not that we're trying to provide more housing to the middle, but there needs to be some constraints around how and where this may advance. Others may object to some of the other four proposed areas as well, but my focus is removing the Towanda Barnes and GE Road area from the consideration. I believe the vast majority of my district's residents share my position, and I've met quite a few already tonight. Trying it in one area is a valid start. Not sure I understand all the economics of who pays for everything else needed in the area beyond just the housing units, since it hasn't happened naturally yet with the claim of more housing being needed and developers always seeking new projects tells me there could be some flaws in the concept trying to be applied in our community. So proceed cautiously in a fiscally responsible manner, but regardless, remove the Towanda Barnes and GE Road area from any consideration for future walkable center that would negatively impact existing residents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Tyson Moore, and then to follow will be James Gaston. Tyson Moore, and then James Gaston.
Thank you.
Everyone, name's Tyson Moore. I'm here, I'm the vice president of the local Strong Towns chapter. Hopefully you've heard of us. If not, happy to talk about it more some other time. Wanted to talk about the missing middle housing today. Another member, Dakota Black, planned to come. He did email you some other thoughts on the topic of thinking about who would be attractive to live in the housing that we're talking about today. So just please make sure to read that and consider it. But Mr. Klaus teed me up pretty nicely because I do want to talk about the economics of the situation. So budgets can be complicated for the city, but when you talk about residences, you could take a zoom back and you can see that there's some pretty simple overall ways to look at the situation. Think about revenue for the city and talk about costs. So the costs for the city are basically dependent upon area. The broader the area that's served, the more it costs to do snow removal, build roads, build sewers, do trash pickup and things like that. So the broader the area, the higher the costs. Revenue, on the other hand, is based on the number of people by sales tax or by the intensity of the development that's in place through property tax. So when you look at it on a per-acre basis, when you have broad areas, very few people living on that area, you've got higher costs and you've got lower revenue. This is the reason why cities like Bloomington and across the country are not able to properly fund their infrastructure right now. This is why the roads are not being repaired. This is why the infrastructure is aging and why we're using debt to fund development of these things. If the path to wealth was low density, then we would be achieving wealth by now. The goal of Strong Towns is to promote financially strong and resilient communities. A way to do that is to follow the traditional wisdom of how residences have been built around the world for all of human history, which is the diversity of residential options. Right now, the reason why we don't have options like this is because they're illegal. You can't build them. We've decided that there's a certain type of residence that although it's existed lots of different places, including in this country, we've decided to outlaw them. We should open up the broader range of options for the community so that we can address things, so we can address the situation and to help improve our prosperity and our resiliency. The missing middle housing is a step in the right direction, and we hope that you can have an open mind to the conversation, to the possibility, and bring these recommendations to the city council to vote so that we can open up this opportunity for the community. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, please.
Next up is James Gaston. And then to follow will be John Biddle.
I'm James Gaston, and I thought I had a lot to say, but I just want to co-sign Jill Whitaker's opinion on the gaming. I know a lot of things that have gone on in town, and there's been promises made and promises broken. And I think we just need a level playing field and keep it 100, as the young people say. So that means be fair about it. So I'm not going to take a lot of time because she said everything I was going to say. So thank you, Jill. I applaud you.
Next up is John Biddle, and then to follow will be J.R. Wilkerson.
My name's John Biddle. I am a resident of the Harvest Point subdivision out at Route 9 and Towanda Barnes Road. I'm no expert on this MMH or whatever you want to call it. I am a taxpayer and in the state of Illinois, they're absolutely outrageous. And in the past year, my tax bill in McLean County went up 29.18%. So the comment about we can't afford to pay for city conveniences and services, well, that can only be met with, well, waste. And over 60% of our taxes are going to unified schools already. And with over 100 administrators in that school district making over $100,000, there's a lot of waste in that. And with this plan, we were just notified of this just the past week. First I heard of it, was the original development plan within our subdivision. And if there's secrets being going on here with this city council and with the residents, maybe Mayor, Mayor Brady, did you just step into this mess? Or have you known about this before he took office? I don't know. Also, in the past two years, I heard even the county board didn't want to develop any more farmland within the county. This is some of the richest farmland in the world. You start digging it up, you throw gravel, concrete on it, it's gone and it's gone forever. It's never coming back. This is Bloomington Normal. This is not Chicago or some suburb up there where you want to start throwing up three-story buildings or more and you want town houses or row houses up there. This is the Midwest and we got homes and we like it like this. If you want something different, move farther north. And my opinion is, in the long haul, I don't think Rivian's going to survive and I don't think there's going to be a housing crisis in Bloomington Normal. Well, we'll see, won't we? I hate to say it, but I don't think the Electric Car Initiative in Rivian is going to make it in the long haul. Mitsubishi didn't. I could be wrong. And what about all the older homes and property in the towns, in this town and even Normal that are dilapidated, falling down? We even got a mall here, Eastland Mall. We even got a mall here, Eastland Mall. Have you heard it be termed a wasteland mall? So much empty space there that's not being used for a thing. I wonder sometimes how much longer is that even going to be used, and why couldn't that be turned into some sort of affordable housing? It's a lot better than seeing people living in tents by Autozone in Normal. If it were me, I'd much rather be in there, being able to stay warm, stay out of the rain, stay out of the cold, stay out of the heat, be able to take a shower and whatnot. And I don't know how much money's been spent on this, whatever you call it, from this firm in California. I don't know if it's under fifty thousand. I don't know if it's two fifty. I don't know if it's three fifty. Why does it take a firm in California to figure this all out?
J.R., if you can bring your comments real close, please.
Okay. Okay, it'll probably be met by another member.
Thank you. Next?
Patty Bishop, and then next up will be J.R. Wilkerson. Did I flip him? Sorry. Go ahead, J.R. Sorry. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, councilpeople, thanks for the opportunity to be here this evening. My name is J.R. Wilkerson. I live on Nine Stone House Court, Harvest Point subdivision. You know, I'm a little concerned about the optics, talking about these zoning changes from the perspective as a homeowner. You folks ran and got elected based upon certain criteria that was important to you and that you were going to make this community better. I'm not sure that getting a California firm and getting it in here in the Midwest and the optics of the pricing, they should be more transparency. So if you'll follow with me just a second and say that you have purchased a single-family home, you put your life savings in it, that home is everything you have, and all of a sudden, the city is going to take away the process of multiple family homes. And I get we need that, okay? But it eliminates the notification, my understanding eliminates the notification of that. It allows no feedback from current citizens, current residents. The property lines can be changed. It can be at, buildings can be added on to and so forth. So if you put yourself in my shoes and a lot of other people, that's my life savings is my home. And if you're going to put, you know, an opportunity to put multiple family homes next to mine and ruin my investment, my property value, just think what that does from your perspective. That's all I ask. I think there needs to be a lot of transparency. I think we need the right to speak. This is my first time speaking to a city council. And we let you folks to represent us and do us right. And God knows, we need good people doing the right kind of things. And I don't think this California firm is qualified to, as some other speakers have said, Bloomington, Illinois, McLean County. Okay? And I'm ultimately obviously against it, and I think our city council needs to have more transparency. And think about the people who elected you, okay? And put yourself in my shoes. Vote no.
Thank you. Next?
Thank you. Next up is Patty Bishop, and then to follow will be Bill Bishop.
Hello, I'm Patty Bishop, also live in Bloomington Harvest Point Association, and I'm also on the board of that homeowners association. And I'm here to speak about the missing middle housing, the MMH discussion that's going to take place tonight. I do want to let everyone know that the HOA was not notified anything about.
Patty, could you move just a little closer to the microphone, please, so we can hear you? Thank you.
The HOA was not notified at all about any discussion of the middle missing housing. So we weren't really aware of this until just last week. I would like to talk about a potential zoning change. If you could change our zone and the definition of what that means, that's, that takes away our, it infringes on our protection of our private property rights. So like J.R. said, we bought property thinking we're Zone One A or One C or Two A, and we now are faced with the potential of just changing the rules of what that zone means. Now you can have a quad level next to you. You can have a, or a quadplex next to you, or a triplex, or you can change the house next door to be a duplex, or it could be three stories tall. Look at that home on Garland Street that probably most of you are aware of, three-story monstrosity with a bunch of art trash out front. I don't want something like that taking place in my neighborhood and having all of a sudden this huge add-on being done to my home. We're right next door to my home. I'm opposed to the fact that this change would give the by right credentials. I don't know what the right term is for that, but changing a zone to to be able to all of a sudden allow these different types of multifamily houses by right. No discussion, no notification, just all of a sudden your neighbor's building onto his house, and it's now two and a half stories, and you want to change the parking rules around that. Every unit only needs to have one parking space. That's not enough for anybody I know. Our neighborhood already has people complaining about people parking on the street and not using their three-car garage and three driveway. Why aren't they doing that? I don't know. And we have rules to convince them to do that. But if the rules are changed to only have one necessary per unit, think of all the people parking on the streets. That's going to impact garbage pickup, mail delivery, snow removal. It's going to cause big problems for the city trying to get things done. And also as the subdivision backs up to a cornfield right now. And I don't know if this is the one that was referenced earlier with Mark Klaus being the corner of Tuana Barnes and GE. I have no idea if they're looking at doing a walkable center back behind us or not. But I do know that there is, the developer is looking to purchase that farmland or to do a land swap so that there can be additional subdivision added on there, extending our own.
Patty, if you can bring any remarks real close.
Sure. The main thing for the HOA is we don't want apartment buildings built right next to the single-family homes that currently back up to a wonderful cornfield. So that's, that's the end of there.
Thank you. At this point, at this point, members of the council, we've crossed the time for public comment. So we're going to need a motion and a second to that motion to extend that time for public comment.
I'm going to motion to, I'm going to motion to extend it for fifteen more minutes so we can have everyone speak what they're saying.
Member Mosley, second of my member Mosley. Thank you. So Madam Clerk, can we go on then with the next speaker?
Take a quick vote, really quick.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Okay. Councilmember Kearns?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes.
Councilmember Motney?
Yes.
Councilmember Dannenberger?
Yes.
Councilmember Strazza?
Yes.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
Thank you. So next up, we will have Bill Bishop, and then to follow will be David Eads.
Hi, Bill Bishop, and I'm part of the Harvest Point subdivision, and my wife just spoke here a minute ago. I'll try not to cover the same things that she covered and other speakers have covered here on MMH. And again, I think my main core problem is transparency. We'd like to have more input and figure out how to solve this crisis because we never got any, anybody asking us, and we just found out a few days ago about this MMH proposal. And we did get a copy of the presentation. I had to dig through the different agenda items. So at least I was able to find it, but I haven't had time to digest that. And again, I'm now no building expert. I want to sort of counter a point that was brought up by somebody else who had said that multi-unit structures are illegal. I'll forward to the council a great article from an alderman in Madison, Wisconsin, and he goes through a nice discussion about how we got into this mess over the years from the sixties all the way to more recently. And really, the problem was in two thousand and seven financial crisis, we had the most amount of defaults with this type of housing. In other words, people were just giving up the keys, and banks were on the hook for this type of housing. So I caution you to delve into these multi-unit housing units. I don't want to, we don't want to really visit the same problems we had there in the, in the past. I think the other thing that he pointed out in this article, and I think it really is, strikes home, is the cost of labor. The cost of materials have gone up significantly, as we all know. And I think we need to think creatively. I know our builder in our subdivision is using prefab, prefabricated walls. And I don't know if you've had a discussion with any builders to come up with different innovative ways to create more affordable housing, but I would suggest that would be a next step for the council to see if there's a way to create better, more economical housing. I'm also concerned about real estate investment companies. We've had several houses in our subdivision get snapped up. A quick story, the house across the street was listed to two hundred and thirty thousand duplex overnight, without even having anyone look at the house. This real estate firm came in and snapped it up for thirty thousand dollars more over what was being asked. It became quickly a rental, and, you know, the yard didn't get mowed and a lot of problems with that. So if we have a solution for economical homes for, to address the MMH, be careful what you ask for because you may get these investment companies that come in and snap all these homes up. So I caution, you know, the, the study that you do, it's not necessarily the people you're going to be serving here. You might be serving an investment company and producing, you know, houses for them to rent out. I'm out of time, so.
Thank you very much, Bill, for your comments. Next?
Next up is David Eads, and then to follow will be Ben Curtainbaugh.
Good evening. I had a few things to talk about initially when I got here, and I'm hearing a lot of different discussions. Ironically, one of the last board meetings I was at, in which I spoke on a matter, was the fees for the video gaming. And that was the city wanted in on a little bit more than just their cut. They want to charge a fee for each machine. And the lady says her business can't survive without it. Here's a solution. If you got a good business, you're going to make it. So give them all a video machine. You can put a little more money in the coffer by charging that annual fee that you're charging per machine, and then you get your little cut off the profit margin too. So that problem solved that way. Everybody's happy. And then if you got good food, good service, you'll stay in business. If you don't, next guy, open it up. My concern coming here tonight was with these little tiny homes that's being built. Where they're going to be, who they're going to have in them, and what kind of services and utilities are actually going to be in them. Are these the same people that was living in a tent that refused to go into the Mission and other housing because they didn't want to give up their lifestyle of drugs and alcohol? If that's the case, are we really helping them through the mental health funding of this? Are we just perpetuating it and being codependent with them? My suggestion is we look into this a little bit more. I don't think this program is going to work out. And if this is the program with the California base, jeez, all you got to do is take a look at California. That answers your question, what the hell they know they're doing. All right? You know, and an issue that I'm going to bring up here, because I've seen it floated, it was in the article, Dan, and I don't know that you were saying it, but they're using it, and they're playing with words in that article. And one of the words they used was undocumented. Undocumented is, in a legal term, what it is, illegal. So we got to address that issue. The city's broke. We know it because we're getting the tax increases. So why don't we start looking at what our resources was originally for, to educate our children properly, which has really dropped off. We need our services of our roads being drivable without causing damage to the cars. The rest of stuff, hey, the church, two plasters paid around every week. Start contributing some money into these projects, and let's see how it works out then. That's all I got to say. Thank you, folks.
Thank you for your comments.
Last up, we have Ben Curtainbaugh.
My name is Ben Curtainbaugh. I'm also a resident of the Harvest Point subdivision. I don't really have anything new to add. I'd just like to reiterate what's already been said. I don't think anybody is opposed to finding solutions for affordable housing, but it shouldn't be done at the detriment to those of us who've already purchased a home. That's really all that I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
There's no further public comment. No further public comment.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you all for your comments. And a reminder for the audience that this is a committee of a whole with the council tonight, so there is not action being taken by means of vote. So it's a subject matter hearing discussion amongst the council after we've heard from you, the public. So thank you for that again. At this time, we'd like to move to the consent agenda, and we'd like to take consideration and action on approving the minutes of the June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five regular committee of the whole meeting as requested by the clerk. So could I get a motion and then a second to approve those minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Member Hendricks, second. Second by Member Strazza. Take the vote.
Councilmember Kearns?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes.
Councilmember Motney?
Yes.
Councilmember Dannenberger?
Yes.
Councilmember Strazza?
Yes.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'd like to move to the regular agenda, and at this point, we should have the presentation and discussion on the MMH scan analysis of the barriers to the missing middle housing report by the Optics Decision, excuse me, Design Company and/or members' memory, to refresh your memory of the council and audience that is here tonight. The intent was to follow up to a report that was given back in, I believe, June, where after that lengthy report was given, there were members of the council that had questions. And because of the hour that evening, I chose to move to the next committee of the whole. Unfortunately, the next one did not have some of the people available at that time. So we are here then now in August to fulfill what is the opportunity for members of the council to ask questions regarding the report. With that, I'm also going to yield to our city manager, Jeff Juergens, to see if he could bring us a little more in-depth discussion.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and thanks for everybody for coming tonight. If you could go to the next slide, I'm going to kick this off and then turn it over to our Director of Development Services and our Planner. But just wanted to start with some real high level and some background information. This all is the result of us trying to address housing within the community. And when we, every time we talk about housing, I try and get a snapshot, where are we today? And so got this data, and you can kind of see from the line chart where we are in terms of housing. Right now, we have eighty-three homes on the market. A healthy market would be about four hundred single-family homes. And there's, there's been quite a steep drop-off there. Next slide. This again stems back in July of two thousand and twenty-four. The city council approved a resolution setting forth its housing priorities. Tonight, we're going to talk about Housing Priority D, which was to do a zoning and a subdivision code review, try and incorporate some of the Strong Town, National Strong Town principles, and look at opportunities, you know, getting us up to the, to the new century and how we might be able to encourage more housing. Next slide. Before I turn it over to Kelly and Alyssa, just wanted to give kind of a high-level overview of some perspective. We see this as a, a potential piece in the housing puzzle. This is not going to solve all of our housing problems, and it's, you know, the other thing with that is it's not going to be appropriate for every zoning district and every area of our community. We know that. One of the things that we want to stress tonight, and in the Opticos report, it talks about a number of different, you know, zoning districts that, that we had them look at. You know, we already, if this is going to continue to move forward, we already are going to recommend a couple of those districts be pulled out. One is the R one C, and the other is B one. One is the R one C and the other is B one. If this were to go forward, what we're asking the council to do is give some direction that, you know, maybe there is some interest in trying to add some missing middle housing within our community. Maybe it's some of the cottage housing uh plans that, that are talked about in the Opticos report. Maybe it's some more of the other types of housing, uh the row housing, different things like that. That if you are interested in getting some of that type of missing middle housing, staff will go back and, and Kelly Pfeiffer will talk about this. Staff will go back and take a look at what, what might fit better for our community and come back with some specific recommendations that the council would then say, yes, we like those. Now let's start the process. We are really pre-process here, so I appreciate uh the, the members of the community coming in and, and sharing their concerns. We're actually, you know, not even to the starting gate on some of this discussion, so you are in early on this. Um, we wanted to start early though, as opposed to going directly to the planning commission with a tax amendment. Because this is uh historical, this is transformational stuff that we're talking about. So we didn't want to just go directly with tax amendments and go through the, uh, to, through the planning commission and public hearings and everybody be surprised. We wanted to have a discussion at the council level, level, get some direction. Make sure everybody understands what we're talking about, where we're trying to go. And then we will start the more formal processes. And it'll be a long process with notice and hearings and there'll be discussions about where is this appropriate, where is it not? There'll be discussion about the walkable centers where, you know, they've identified a few. But what, you know, when you really narrow down to what, what the actual walkable centers are in our community, it's gonna continue to get more narrow. So this is really just the start of the process. And at the end of this, you know, we'll certainly answer any questions, but we're gonna be looking for council direction of is missing middle housing something you want us to continue to explore and bring, bring back some recommendations? And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to our Development Services Director, Kelly Pfeiffer.
Uh, next slide, please. Thank you. Um, so Priority D has two components, zoning and subdivision. Missing middle actually deals with both of those. So we have been looking internally at things we already know are a problem with some kind of buildability of housing. So in some places you can build them, but you can't plat them, so you have to do condos. So we are aware and good about studying your standard multifamily, your single family. But this missing middle is a very specialized um study area. And we went out and secured Opticos uh to do that. So Opticos Chicago office um had already been down here to speak to the Mid-America, the Mid-Ellinois Realtors Association. They came recommended by BNEDC. And I had actually seen their report for Knoxville, Tennessee that had been done a few years ago. So um we believe that they could help us understand what are the best practices in it if we were to go? And what is, does our zoning code allow it right now or where doesn't it? So we are also internally looking at our subdivision code. So as you'll be aware, we did a PUD recently and in order to actually plat the townhomes, we had to grant variances and things. So that is still um going through review right now. Next slide, please. Okay, so Opticos, what is this study and what isn't it? So this is an analysis that identifies those barriers in our code um that would be preventing MMH in our current zoning if we wanted to do that. It is consistent with many of the goals and subgoals in our comp plan. Um, specifically, chapter four, the neighborhoods area. So those are just some excerpts on there that you can't probably see. So it is just the first step in evaluating whether MMH should be allowed and incorporated into our code. Next slides, please. It is not proposing to convert existing neighborhoods from their primary use or change their character. It's not recommending putting um AMH to all types of single-family zones. In fact, we only studied one single-family zone, and that was R one C. Um, the rest were not. So it is not just an evaluation of traditional infill, but we are and have been tasked to prioritize infill development. But there are vacant lands in some of these walkable areas or underutilized lands or large parking lots that may be appropriate to consider for redevelopment. And it by, it, uh, it is not the sole answer to creating any kind of variety. Um, the map that you see there, the aerial exhibit, that is, the color blue is over the lands that are zoned R two, R three, A, R D, D two, and B one. So we struck out and took the color off of R one C, so we thought that might give you a good view about what lands we are actually talking about um that have those zones, but we stripped out R one C. Next slide, please. Missing middle, what is it? It is, it's, it's single-family homes, duplexes, tries, quads, townhomes, courtyards. Um, it generally fits within those walkable neighborhoods. Um, it is largely smaller scale, so it's great for starters or downsizers. Um, it is young professionals like it. Again, I'm, I'm thinking downsizing lately, so downsizers really enjoy it, workforce housing, teachers, police officers. Because it should use the land more efficiently and less land, it generally should cost less. Next slide, please. So what it is and what is not, what is missing middle, as before, the study was what it was and was it wasn't, what it is and what is not. So it is not allowing all scales everywhere. Um, it's not necessarily subdesigned, low income. It is not trying to encourage off-site ownership. But it's not just for infill near downtown if we don't want it to be, hence the other potential walkable centers. Um, it is increasing options for owning and living in the community through different phases of life. It is supposed to be more affordable and attainable by design. Again, less land, less infrastructure, theoretically less money. These are things that were very much permitted and built prior to nineteen sixty-two. So in those areas where we have housing prior, you will see those sprinkled throughout the community. So, and it is really trying to increase the flexibility for a variety of ages and incomes to choose. But really, those areas are most successful in the walkable centers. Next slides, please. So this is our current existing housing stock as far as percentages go. So there are two levels of missing middle. Um, there is the house scale and upper missing middle. So really, you would see more house scale presenting itself with your duplexes and your buildings with three to four units. Your upper is more appropriate where you have the buildings with five to ten, but these are not huge, tall. That's not missing middle. We can build apartment buildings here. Next slide, please. So this is really going to be limited sites. Everything kind of has to work together here. So it's not just where a walkable center is. We also have to have the infrastructure capacity. Opticos had no analysis of the infrastructure capacity. We have to look at the appropriate zoning districts. They did. We asked specifically to look at zoning code so they could look at those provisions in those codes and guide us to if there was something in the way of doing missing middle. And again, community desire, where do we want it? So this is not everything that would be mapped. Um, it does take kind of an overlay of all of those. Next slide, please. This is the chart. So this is the six zoning districts and where our provisions are helping hurting or not having an impact on missing middle. So where you have an X, a red X or a question mark, those are areas we need to look. If we did want to enable missing middle, we need to look into our code at those things that are not green checkmarks. Um, I put parenthetical references around the R two to D two. We don't believe uh that R one C is appropriate for study at all. Um, and B one, not at this time. So really, we think that trying to dive in deeper to see if there are opportunities for R two, in R two areas, R three A, R D and D two, if we proceed forward. Next slide, please. Next step. So we're working on improving the billability of existing houses. So we have some tax amendments that are already under review. Those are things that are hopefully gonna allow us to plat things you can already build. You just can't plow them. You have to do it by condo, things like that. Um, we'd like to pursue the missing middle. So we would basically see it with your direction. We can get some feedback from you about what you like, don't like. And then allow us to come with a strategy that we think could put that into play. By no means, these are all preliminary recommendations. We haven't solved them. We haven't dove in yet to see whether they're appropriate and can be done in those. And we are continuing to pursue our subdivision code. Next slide, please. I think that's it. Yeah. So happy to answer any questions. We do not have Opticos on the phone unfortunately tonight. So it's just us, but if you have questions specifically about them, we can get that too if we can't answer them.
Thank you very much for that summary. And as noted, there is not the representative on the phone from Optico who was on the phone presenting the first report. With that being said, um, this is the opportunity for council to ask questions. Um, I'm showing and obviously if we can't get the question answered to your satisfaction, then we will look forward to getting the question answered. So with that, I see Member Mosley.
Yeah, my question is pretty, I hope is simple, but I was just gonna ask in plain terms. Can, I know you said R one C is off the table, but can you give me like a simple version of the difference between R one C and R two? Because I saw some of that, try, the checks and the Xs were kind of aligned.
So we initially figured out which zones we would like to look at by looking at, at the intent of the districts that we have adopted in our zoning code. And because R one C is, is a single-family district but does allow duplexes in some instances, we said, could this be appropriate? Is it even worth looking at in the first place? And so we did ask them to include that initially. R two is what's called a mixed residence district. You can do duplexes by right in addition to being able to do single-family. You can do some of the smaller multiple-family and townhouse type things with a special use. So we, we questioned in the first place whether R one C was going to make sense, but we wanted to make sure we got everything we could out of, out of the scope. Um, and after what came back from them, we do feel that it's, it's not where we need to be pursuing this at this time.
Yeah, and the reason that I ask that is because in my ward, right behind my house, I'm in the Prairie Vista area, which I saw the blue highlight. And I know my home and now right behind there, they're building. But right across the way, we do have like the townhomes, condos that are owned right, right, right behind Prairie Vista and seventeen. And then I think to my home. And it is kind of a mix of both um us that are downsizing um as well as those newer families. So thank you.
Member Motney?
Yeah, just a quick question and then I'd like to make some points, time remaining at the end. Um, R two. I'd like for you, in the spirit of transparency, to share the names of many of our subdivisions that are single-family subdivisions that are currently zoned R two.
Um, I can give you a, a bunch of names of R two subdivisions. I haven't gone through to verify what has duplexes, what doesn't, um, because that is a permitted by right. But um, so I think he brought one up, uh Prairie Vista area, there is Wittenburg Woods has a pretty good chunk of R two. Quite a bit of Old Farm Lakes has a bit of, has R two. There are portions, I believe even of the Royal Lynx area and some of the uh Tipton, does Tipton have any R two? There's one little, little chunk, Harvest Point has, yeah, Harvest Point is mostly R two. The Grove does have a little bit of R two. Um, those are all areas that have slightly smaller lots in those single-family subdivisions.
Okay, um, well, let me, let me just say that before we go about, and, and the setup tonight was quite different than what we were asked to vote on accepting and adopting this report on May the twenty-seventh. So I take exception that we were in the suggest mode at that time. I know some of these things have been walked back. R two is all over our community. Neighborhoods such as Sapphire Lake, Harvest Point, Old Farm, North Point, on and on and on. Before coming before us and recommending that we disrupt the heart of our city and these communities. You should know the names of all of those subdivisions. It's important to know what their character is and um be aware of that before coming forward and making recommendations to us that we disrupt those neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, other members? Member Kearns?
Yeah, um, just one quick point of clarification from the beginning is that um the initial discussion was tabled by council members. There was a vote and that uh to table it indefinitely. And so then it was the work of the council with the mayor uh to be able to bring this back to city, to have it be back, brought back to a um committee of the whole meeting. So I just wanted to make sure, I don't know if that helps with meeting minutes and what have you, but I just wanted to make that point of clarification. I guess I just have a couple of comments. I'll keep it quick. That from what I'm hearing from city staff is that you're having to do a lot of ad hoc piecemeal uh variances, different things like that. And so to me, I would love to see, I agree with a lot of public commenters in terms of let's get more transparency, let's get more of a strategy. Let's um keep flexibility, obviously, based on community feedback and what we think is gonna make sense and what's gonna keep with the character of our communities. I, I'm not saying that, you know, we're, we're, we're gonna allow you to steamroll everything and, and um, you know, not take into consideration what our community wants. But what I'm hearing is that you need to look into some changes so that things can go smoother when it, it is making sense. It's something someone wants to build. It's something that the community wants. And your, your hands are kind of tied at this moment. And so that is what I'm in favor of, is you doing the work and recommending to us some changes that makes sense. So thank you for your time and work on this.
Member Scott?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, and I'd just like to, to emphasize that as well, um, and appreciate all the comments from, from public. Um, anyone that has a, a young person trying to find a home or has a, has a ugly parent they're trying to downsize or, or has employees that they're trying to keep understands the pressure that, that, that housing has on us right now. Um, and I can completely understand if folks are thinking that, that we're gonna be up here rubber stamping every single thing that's in front of us, being frustrated at, at, at lack of transparency. So I want to emphasize too that we want feedback. The city wants feedback, absolutely. There are no interest in, in going ahead and steamrolling and just saying yes to everything that comes in front of us. And that said, because we have this, this housing, these housing uh issues is that we've had have issues of, of things popping up um uh quickly and having to make decisions really, really fast. And because we're in such pressure, we've got to go ahead and act now to do research so that we make these changes where they're appropriate, sustainably and safely. So I appreciate all the feedback that's come and I appreciate the opportunity as for us to say, yes, I want you to research.
Member Ward?
Yeah, um, thank you for the, the discussion, for the comments, the report. I wonder if we could go back to this, the last slide before the kind of the questions or discussions slide, the one that had the three recommendations.
The, the next steps one?
Yeah, that one. Um, I just wonder if um the number two and number three seem pretty self-evident um in terms of the meaning. But I wonder if you could just expound for a moment on what you mean by buildability of existing housing for the benefit of, of everybody, for the sake of transparency.
So I, I think Kelly started out by saying, we asked someone else to look at missing middle, because we don't build it, right? We don't know what we're doing when it comes to those structure types. But we've been building single-family and multiple-family in Bloomington for two hundred years now. We do it pretty well. Um, the question that we had about single-family and multiple-family is how do we get more ownership of it and how do we get better financing of it? Because those are the things that we kept hearing from real estate professionals as well as our developers and the community in general. So the buildability comes down to, I already know I can build it. Can I put it on different pieces of property so I can sell it to someone to live in rather than having to sell eight townhouses at once that then a rental company has to own, right? Um, and then there's some just real silly practical things. Like we have a building code trigger for fire suppression at four stories, but I can only build to three. And so we're basically all of the, all of the money in a multiple-family complex that already all only can go in R three or R three B anyway. We're not talking about that in single-family. But how do we make that more affordable for the people who are trying to do it in our community anyway? It's the text amendments that we were talking about previously that have moved are a lot of really boring, like putting the dots in the right place and making sure your Ts are crossed appropriately. But when it comes down to building code and subdivision and real estate, that stuff gets really important and it gets lost in the weeds. We're trying to make it easier to do what we already can do. Did that answer your question?
That last sentence made perfect sense. Thank you. Um, that's really helpful. And then I, I just want to make one, one other comment. When this last came before the council in May, um, it was, as council member Kearns mentioned, um, tabled indefinitely. And by my reading of the, um, of the city code, that's that that was inappropriate. The city code doesn't call for or doesn't allow for tabling things indefinitely. The city code allows us to table it to a date certain. And it's not on the agenda for a date certain yet. And I want to simply say that because what we did in May was inappropriate. And I don't want this discussion, as important as it is, to fall through the cracks again and get sort of pushed aside and ignored as, um, as something that that we'll just forget about. We've, it, it's too important a discussion. People obviously have opinions about this and have showed up and and used their voices appropriately and and have things to say about this. And I think that is a testament to how important this is to our community. And I think we would be doing a disservice to the community if we continued to just kick this can down the road and and pretend like it's just gonna go away.
Thank you. Member Montney? Oh, I'm sorry, member Straza, I didn't see your light. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, a couple of things I heard tonight was definitely transparency. Trust, uh, is very big for me. I want to make sure we're transparent. The city council is showing we're being very transparent. The staff is being very transparent. Uh, trust is something we have to build, and I think there's been some lack of, you know, trust that says we've lost that a little bit over time for a variety of reasons. Um, one of the things I want to make sure that we're doing is as we, if we go further with this, is I want to make sure we're making sure we have definitions as we see things in next steps and what terms mean. We as a council and the public need to know what these things walkable. What do you mean by walkable centers? It seems very obvious, but what does that mean? How does that spread out to our community and where does that mean? Because showing that graph up there with all the the blue, that is a large space. That is not infill. That's it's all over the the community. So I think we need to make sure we're really designating what areas we're really thinking about doing. And what does it mean by walkable centers? Because not everything on that blue was walkable centers. I know that was not the intention of that. So I want to make sure as we continue, if we continue with this, that we are very transparent and we're very making sure everyone understands what's going on. And that we, because I want to make sure there's more buy in and we have this because yes, it is important that we need to find housing. I want to make sure people have a place they can call their own. But we also have to be very careful is by opening this up and making changes, I want to make sure we're not allowing it. And if we can do anything about it, is investment groups coming in basically taking up all that space? And all of a sudden, nobody can own anything anyway. So then we're just stuck to back to where people can't afford anything because everyone else owns it. And I want to make sure we're very careful in what we do next.
Member Montney?
So I'm just connecting the dots as to how we got here today. So TPMA out of Indianapolis was retained by the McLean County Regional Planning Commission. Are you familiar with their reports? So, um, these reports were included as pre reads in some of the documents that we've received on prior housing studies. So I would assume they're, um, you know, in your, uh, knowledge bank. Over a thousand people were, um, surveyed in that process. And that's also the first report where I ever heard the term missing middle. I believe there are some that may be under the impression that missing middle's expertise is limited to Opticos. And while the California office is led by someone who is a Cal Berkeley grad, missing middle was mentioned in that report. That survey respondent asked a number of questions around the board, and I'm just sharing just briefly for context. Fifty-four percent of those one thousand one hundred and eighteen respondents indicated that they were considering leaving the McLean County area, the number one reason being their property taxes. And they related that to housing affordability. Um, in other related questions, when they were asked to rank things that were important to them, a large majority of them, the number one preference was I aspire to have a single family home with a yard. And yard was specifically mentioned. Um, and related questions, um, they were asked to, um, indicate things that weren't of interest. And one of the things that rated highly was avoiding high density. And revisit local taxing policies was set up as a top priority and ranked as an important barrier to address. I I do want to mention, and I know I've written in and I've asked this and I still don't know the number, but in this report at that time on page fifty eight, they indicated that we currently had one thousand six hundred and thirty units of housing in the development pipeline that had already been approved that had not moved forward at that point. And, um, they also indicated the past ten year look from a population growth perspective was zero point eight percent. And in the Opticos report, it's interesting that they have a find that we will grow twenty seven percent in population between twenty twenty five and twenty thirty five. So the TPMA, if you haven't looked at it, I would encourage you to do so because it's an important indicator that we've already looked at a lot of these things. Then I'm gonna jump to June of twenty twenty four. And our city manager at that time, um, you know, had become involved in conducting, um, conversations and engaging the public to talk about housing issues. And one of those, which was also provided to us as a pre read, was a housing symposium that was held in early June. Um, and the conversations that led up to that and other smaller sessions had taken place in the spring of twenty twenty four. Two specific things were called out as to why these weren't moving. Number one, high cost of construction. Number two, high interest rates. When asked to identify housing barriers, um, they were given a list of things to choose from. I think you guys attended this session. Zero votes were given for zoning issues as a barrier to development. And when the city put forth a zoning and process review as a category for participants to prioritize, the framing was to reduce red tape and that got one vote and ranked seventh out of eight potential solutions. At that time, um, we also introduced the missing middle, middle concept. And zero votes were cast in support of that. I share that because then I'm trying to understand how we got from that report saying those things. Approved missing middle housing products, zero votes. And zoning codes being irrelevant. And I went and rewatched our meetings and it was confirmed in the meetings that somehow a wholesale look at our zoning code all across the city became a number four priority. And I'm complicit in this because we all consent to those priorities. Let me just say that. But I will also remind everyone that as I've gone back and looked at things that we have approved on consent agendas without discussion, without transparency to the public, we already have language associated with accessory dwelling units in our code. And I, I looked back over the history of that. And again, you know, when we get packets of hundreds of pages and twenty eight pages of zoning code rewrites, sometimes those things aren't missed and we depend on you to bring those to our attention. And I want to compliment you for saying that no longer will those be on consent and that there will be dialogue for the public. So as it relates to this particular study, number one, I'm trying to figure out why are we here? If our primary stakeholder group did not identify this as an important area and we've got many other things that we could and should be talking about, like making progress on the rehab of the nine hundred and three properties and so forth that have been identified as things that we all agree on. And, you know, how, again, the opportunity cost, the time, I have lots of questions about how we selected this firm. Um, and, um, you know, I, I will save that for another time. The content of the report itself too. And in researching Opticos and in researching the sources that they cited on our document, the local images are all, of course, you know, Google Maps images, the photos and things like that, give credit to Google Maps. But this is all predicated around transit oriented development strategies with the words imperative new code changes for us to transition Bloomington into walkable urban places. And there's all kinds of information laying throughout this that discourages the use of cars. And and I wonder, you know, if it was brought to their attention that our community is home to two wonderful automobile insurance companies and also a second largest employer that is now in fact an automobile manufacturer. And last, the surveys that have been quoted, National Association of Realtors and so forth. I went back and I read all of those surveys. And, um, the context in their population for those surveys was people in the fiftieth largest urban areas in the U S. And Bloomington in its population ranges in about four hundred and seventy fifth on that list. So for me, I hope this is the last that we're gonna talk about missing middle as a marketing term. And that we just get back to work on behalf of the people in this community, looking at things case by case so that we can make good decisions that respect people's private property rights and also enable the needs that we have to pursue housing. We cannot change macroeconomic issues. This is not an issue in this community alone. And for those communities who have brought in this code, Portland, Oregon, I was there three weeks ago. And if you go and Google their state of the economy as put together by their Chamber of Commerce. And I respect the public commenter who spoke about the economics benefits tonight. However, they've seen an outmigration as reported in that state of their economy of a net one billion in income loss in their community. Cars are parked everywhere. There's full size houses behind houses. It's really something. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'd like, I'd like to move that we extend our, um, council time at least ten minutes.
Motion by member Moosley and second to my Kearns, member Kearns. Clerk, would you take a vote, please?
Councilmember Kearns?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes.
Councilmember Montney?
Yes.
Councilmember Dannenberger?
Yes.
Councilmember Straza?
Yes.
Councilmember Hendrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
I.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we can move on to member Mosley.
Yeah, I, I just, I'm gonna be really quick too. I know you mentioned earlier, right? You use the term affordability and how you were looking to control that. You know, I would recommend if this moves forward, right? The recommendation to us, um, includes like objectives as to how this could be. This approach could make things more affordable, um, because I think someone made a comment in public comments, right? How do we prevent those larger firms from coming in and then even controlling rent, um, and cost as well? So I would just look at what type of barriers can we put in place on our own to make sure that we can protect our own area as well? Um, and then the second thing that I had is, and I hope, um, Alderman Dannenberger speaks here shortly is how do we look at the zoning component where we don't have those one Z, two Z outreach that fall outside? I think, um, Alderman Montney mentioned that as well as to what comes to us and what doesn't because it may be in consent. So we won't have those same white oak type discussions that we had previously.
Thank you. Member Kearns?
Yeah, I just have, um, a kind of a follow up question. I appreciate member Montney's comments. I just wonder, it, it felt presented as like an either or scenario where if you are focusing on missing middle or the things that we've been discussing tonight, does it mean that you don't have the ability to focus on other things and the, and the, and the other things that she mentioned might, that she might prioritize? I mean, I don't, that question's a little unfair. I'm not trying to pit you against member Montney. So I'll, I'll kind of take, roll that back a little bit, but will you have the capacity to do things other than just think about missing middle?
I think, uh, uh, our city manager can answer that for you.
I'll, I'll step in and take that arrow. Yes, absolutely. And so I think that's a good point there, you know, and some people raised it tonight. We've got a lot of homes on the market. I don't know that we think they're nine hundred, but but there are certainly hundreds of homes that are dilapidated, that are abandoned, and we have other staff that are working on those issues to get those back on the market and to address those.
Thank you. And then just maybe a little plug that I have been thinking about when you mentioned that there were things that were able to be built prior to nineteen sixty two. I see that all over Ward one and it, it creates, they have yards. They, um, are seamlessly part of the community. And so I think that there is room for a variety of options. And so I, I am looking forward to what your specific recommendations are.
Member Ward?
Just a quick question. Um, Alderwoman Montney, you referred to a report at the beginning of your comments. What was the date of that report?
The report from the McLean County Regional Planning Commission, is that the report you're referring to with the, um, firm that they retain TPMA?
Yes.
The date of that report, I believe, was twenty twenty three. I, it's a quite a long report. I printed out several pages on it. But it was also included as a link in one of the other documents. So
So it's a couple of years old during the pandemic.
It was twenty, it was twenty twenty three, I believe, twenty twenty three. So post pandemic and introduce the concept of missing middle, which is one of the reasons why I brought it up.
I just wanted the date. That, that was all.
Yeah.
Do you get your question answered?
Yes, and then some.
Thank you. Any other comment?
No other comments at this time. Thank you.
Go right ahead. Uh, city manager Jergens?
Thank you. Um, I appreciate the conversation tonight. This is helpful. This is, this is really what staff wanted and and to get some feedback and to get some information. To councilmember Montney's, uh, point, yes, this does look very different than, um, kind of what you saw the first time this came forward with the presentation from Opticos. There, we are looking at this a little different. We are taking, you know, a little different approach. We think it's appropriate based on the feedback we've received and as we've gotten more into it. So, uh, I just wanted to say I appreciate it and want to again reiterate, this is not going to be a one size fits all. This is not going to be something that we can do in all of our neighborhoods, all over our city. But are there some places, and we have actually already had some development proposals that have been, you know, the cottages are talked about in this, uh, report and proposals where it would make sense in, you know, a, a development like that within the community. So we are seeing some of this stuff, whether, you know, again, it's a potential piece to the puzzle. But we're gonna look to the council to tell us, do you want us to continue to explore this and bring back some more specific recommendations and ideas? And then we will start the more formal process, the public hearings. But this is not something staff is gonna go out unilaterally and push. And this is not something, you know, we're trying to push down anybody's throats. We do see it as a potential piece to the puzzle for some locations within the city.
So just one follow up comment about that. There, there is, there are streets in this community and our neighborhoods, and many of the people live in one of the neighborhoods where this is true, where one side of the street is R two and one side of the street is R one C. We have entire neighborhoods that exist exclusively of single family homes that are R two. If there's any further evaluations done on this, R two should also be removed. We have streets in Ward two where the same street, one house is R one C and the next house is R two. To include R two, I'm surprised that that wasn't already removed based on the numbers of neighborhoods in the list that I've sent in and provided in that category. Thank you.
And Mayor, can I come up real quick?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so we actually, we've had a lot of discussion about the R two and and there was some debate, you know, back and forth. And we certainly understand if that comes out, if it does stay in, you know, uh, staff will evaluate that. They may come back with a recommendation, um, not to include it. Uh, we, we understand that's one where it's gonna need quite a bit of analysis to figure out if it makes sense or not. This is, this is by no means saying this should happen in R two. This is really just starting that discussion.
Member Hendricks?
Kind of with that point, so when do we expect this to come back to us for a vote so that we can show whether or not that approval exists?
When it's gonna come back to us? When it's ready. It's not ready yet.
So
I believe the majority of this council has requested this to come back many times. And we brought it to the committee of the whole as member Montney wanted. When will it be back to vote?
Well, member Hendricks? We brought forth tonight to get the questions answered. And looking back at that Member Ward brought up was a matter in which from a parmitarian and legal standpoint, needs to be researched. And so when that's researched and we have an answer to that. And when I talk with other council members and hear from other council members and talking to other council members, we have the feedback tonight because of that. And then we'll bring it back when we think it's ready from the standpoint of staff, legal and our city administration. With your input.
To be clear, I did not request this to be placed on the agenda for discussion tonight.
Yeah. Member Moseley?
I was just gonna ask, when we talk about bringing it back, is, I think the question is, do we bring, do we bring to us for a vote if we're giving them permission to explore these additional options versus adopt, right?
Correct.
I think that's what they ask is, so will that come in the coming meetings? Or will that just be, because they basically are going to be at a standstill with this until we've actually vote on that aspect. I think that's what the ask is, right?
Sure. Well, that, that decision is going to lie with the mayor and that decision is going to lie with administration as we deal with every council meeting that we have when we put an agenda together. And I don't have that exact date for you.
That should be the first thing I want to do.
Are we talking about like the next six weeks or the next few meetings or like, you know, next quarter, next year?
Well, when we discuss it as we have tonight and we hear your input, which we are now, then we'll come back with a timeframe in which for the next timeframe in which to take it before council. And some of the things I just articulated, I'd like to find out the answer to some of those questions that Member Ward brought up. And then I think also, when we believe from a standpoint of putting a meeting agenda together that we do for any meeting, then we'll have a timetable in which to share with the council. Member Ward?
Yeah. First thing, we have the city attorney sitting here. And presumably he knows parliamentary procedure and knows the code and could probably right now answer whether the code calls for people to be able to table things indefinitely or whether it has to have a date certain. So that's my first question.
Ms. Spanos, can you answer the question?
Yes, sir. I often correct people when they use the word table. I always say postpone. Roberts Rules talks about postponing to a date certain or indefinitely. Our rules provide for a motion to postpone to a certain day, but a motion to table for an indefinite unspecified time. So what we did wasn't against our rules. If you look at 208, subpart B, motion to defer consideration or table, it says the council may defer a substantive motion for later consideration at an unspecified time. There is a limit on that of 100 days. So it's to be brought back within 100 days or it dies. Or it could also become, it could also come back in another fashion, which is, I think, part of what we're looking at today is talking about what form would you like to see it?
And that's my second question. That's, yes, that's my second question. It could come back as a council member initiative, right? It doesn't have to wait for whoever we are to put it on the agenda. I don't know who we are, whether that's a royal we or, or anything like that, but.
No mice in our pockets. A council member who wishes to revisit the matter during the time must take action to revive consideration of the original motion or else a move to suspend the rules. So that's in that section of the code. But again, that's to bring back exactly what we postponed indefinitely. And if there's another iteration down the way, down the road, then it would come like any other matter. So.
You mean tabled indefinitely, right? Not postponed?
Yes.
Thanks. Just want to be clear.
Did I get your question answered, Member?
Certainly.
Thank you. Any other members with questions before we move on to the next topic of discussion? Thank you. Then we're going to move on to a presentation and discussion at this point on video gaming as requested by the city council. This again will be a presentation and discussion only. I, as the mayor, was asked by members of the council to bring forth a discussion regarding video gaming and an update regarding video gaming in the city of Bloomington. And that's what we're going to attempt to do. And I, at this time, will bring or ask our city manager, Mr. Jurgens, if he would go ahead and walk us through a presentation that has been put together. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. I don't, I don't have a formal presentation necessarily to go through other than to say, to remind the council, to remind the public, we currently have a city code that provides for a limitation of 60 licensed establishments. So there can be 60 licenses out there. We have a provision that says if your license is part of a development agreement, what we call a contractual license, it does not count against that cap. We currently do not have any establishments that have a license like that. So the total license we currently have are 60. I am happy to answer any questions about our, about our code or about the current situation of gaming. I did provide the council with a lot of data in terms of the history. I think since this began in 2012, the city has collected over $10 million in its 5% share of the tax revenue. So it is a healthy number. It has gone up over time. And I think over the last, in FY '25, the municipality share was about $1.3 million. So it is a significant number to the city. Some of the options that I have heard being discussed are to either raise the cap. Right now we have 12 people on a waitlist. So one idea would be to raise the cap from 60 to 72. Another, you know, possibility is to eliminate the cap. Another is to switch to a system where we are limiting the terminals as opposed to the establishments. And then the final option is just leave the system the same. I will say that in having some of these discussions, we do need to do another round of audit and review for signage and making sure people are in compliance with how much they have covered in terms of windows, flags, banners, things like that. We do have a lot of limitations on those types of things in our general sign code. And we are going to take a look at and make sure everybody is in compliance with that and understands those rules. So regardless of this conversation and where this goes, the city will be doing another round of that type of review. Happy to answer any questions, as is our attorney or city clerk.
Thank you very much. Mr. Manager and Member Hendricks?
Yeah, I've got a few questions and really they're not questions, but just reviews over our current system so that people are aware. Leslie, what are our current requirements as far as when you have the license? Especially when it comes to how you get on the list in the first place? And then how you keep your license as far as revenue goes?
So really the waitlist is seen as kind of a but for license, like but for one being available. So this full review happens. So you have to have an Illinois state gaming license. You have to do the full application process, pay the fee. The internal reviews occur, which, one of which is you can't owe anything more than $500 to the city. That includes utility bills. It could be taxes, fines, legal fees, you know, anything across the city. And then if everyone has, if the full application basically would receive a license, then they go on the gaming waitlist. And we work through that list. When you get to the top or one becomes available, then we review the license. The portion of, I think, what you're talking about, the 50/50 a little bit on that side, that doesn't have anything to do necessarily with the review. But once someone has received a license, there's an annual renewal that happens for the license. And the 50/50 rule is that no more than 50% of your business as a whole can, the revenue generated can be from gaming. So it can be from food and beverage. It could be from bowling or, you know, some other income sources for the business, but it has, no more than 50% can come from gaming. And so when we do the renewal, they do a affidavit that we basically validates that all the information on file for them is still valid. We do the same internal review, making sure that no balances or there's any issues, say, with the license with public safety, things like that. And then they submit a gross income revenue report. And the gross income revenue report calls out each category, the income amount that was received for the year. And then it's validated, the gaming revenue is validated against the Illinois Gaming Board and the numbers that are reported from them. And then we also have a validation that goes through on the food and beverage side. So for instance, if they say they made $150,000 in game, in food, we want to make sure that they're also paying taxes for the $150,000 that's reported. And then we hold the right to also ask for additional support. So if we want to validate it through taxes and other things like that. But so a little bit hefty on your answer, but I hope that kind of addresses somebody else's questions too.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. So really that 50%, what that helps to do within our community is to prevent gaming parlors or gaming establishments that exist solely for the purpose of gaming, correct?
That is correct. That's been council's direction in the past was to prevent gaming parlors. You see those in other surrounding communities and not in Bloomington.
That was my next question. Does Normal have a cap on their gaming license and do they have a 50% rule like we do?
I don't believe that they have a cap or a 50% rule and they do allow gaming parlors.
Okay, they do allow gaming parlors. So some people may have seen and people brought that up to me, but that's a normal decision, not a Bloomington decision. When was the last time we approved somebody from the waitlist? Do you know that? Sorry, I don't like to play the gotcha game and I swear I'm not doing that.
I don't know offhand, but I can look at it as we're going to.
The other thing is, we didn't, we currently have 60 licenses. Well, we have, we have an allowance of 60 licenses. We can go above that if you're part of an economic development agreement, which has been done multiple times where out of town businesses may move to town such as QuickTrip or, why am I forgetting? I've been told it over and over. Lulu, thank you. I was thinking Lucy's. No, Lulu's Pizza, which can come in, circumvent our local business establishments and get those licenses. But we have 60 licenses currently. We had less than that though in the past, right? Do you know what that gradual increase has looked like over the years?
I don't.
That predates you.
Yeah, I don't offhand. I mean, we, we have the QuickTrip development agreement out there. They just have not pursued their license. So eventually that might be 61. Lulu's went back. That business didn't sell. There is a transfer opportunity. If the establishment and location stay the same, that didn't happen there. So that one went away. Progress, I mean, usually our waitlist sits maybe six or seven people. It's pretty hefty right now with 12. I don't have data on how long it's sat that way.
Okay, so we've increased over the years. And I wish the police chief's not here because I would love to hear if there's any data or information as an increase of crime or something from having increased gaming terminals. I suspect not. But I know that that's something that sometimes comes up. As far as my issues with our current cap, I, I have issues with the fact that economic development agreements can come in and circumvent our local business owners. If we want to say that we support local business, you know, those development agreements, as it stands right now with a cap, allows that to be circumvented. I have concerns with transfers, as was brought up in public comments, that an individual can buy an establishment and be transferred it. That's nothing that they're doing wrong, but it's just the way that our system works. Same thing can be said, you can get on the list, you can get the license, you can transfer it to other individuals as well, right? And so that really is a system that we can talk more about. My big thing is that I want to see us look at increasing that limit. And if we want to do that by a case by case basis of, we wait until we see a set of names and we decide whether or not those are individuals that we are, you know, we have the confidence of the long list of regulations that comes with it that the clerk reviewed, then I'm fine with that. If there's other discussions about why we have a cap when many other communities do not, I'm open to that too. But I think the current system that we have very much creates winners and losers in our community. It puts, you know, businesses pitted against each other where you're literally hoping that the other one fails so that they close, so that you can open up a business and get a license in order to help cover, you know, some of those expenses. Do I love the fact that businesses have to use gaming to do this? No. Am I somebody who's a strong proponent of gaming? No. But do I believe that government regulation, red tape and creating a system where we benefit some over others is fair? Not at all. So I would love to see us increase the limit. I would love to see us increase or enforce existing policies when it comes to signage, when it comes to windows, when it comes to, you know, the work that we're doing with checking those revenues to avoid parlors, which I'm purely against. But to me, this is about local businesses who have sat waiting for a very long time related to this cap that we have self imposed and the ways that it has been abused and, and used incorrectly over the years.
Member Montney?
So about two or three years ago, city manager Gleason instituted a process where we were auditing these attestations that the license holders were putting forth. And in fact, several of the licenses had to be forfeited at that point because they were noncompliant with the expectations from the food and beverage and other revenue sources perspective. I just want to confirm that those audits are continuing to be done. And if not, that should be added, not just cosmetically with the signs that people are talking about now, but the integrity of that process, you know, we, we should be, we should be auditing those. So is that taking place?
So currently there's an annual review that happens for the license. We do have the right in the code to take quarters and look at them. And so there has been times when things of concern have come forward where we've needed to audit one. There is not, say, a semi annual review 50/50 audit or something like that. Not to say that there couldn't be, but currently it is, it's done on the annual review side. And then, like I said, with the renewals, unless there's something like that comes forward that brings concern.
So I know after several public commenters over the last year or so, I've asked for these audits to be done. There's floor plan requirements that I believe we have many locations that are not in compliance. And, you know, this list did just grow from, you know, previously, I think, two or three to 12. I was very surprised to see it dramatically increase. But we should be doing that. You know, that's on us to enforce the expectations. I, I would like to see that done and it not be something that we just do ad hoc, but that we have a commitment standard approach to doing so that this is perpetually more effectively managed.
I will say also, I didn't mention it because I didn't go through every step of like the review process and things like that. But we do ensure that the computer generated reports are there, the square footage is appropriate. There has to be so many seats per terminal within the facility. There's, you know, fire inspections and annual reports that come up with that. So we do look at that also, but it is currently on an annual basis.
Just a couple other points that have come up in the pre-read that we were given. So, you know, when we talk about the big numbers coming to our community, I think it's also important to talk about the big numbers that are actually leaving our community in this. And if you look on the gaming board and at the documents that are available, you will see that more money leaves our community than stays relative to the municipal government share and also the business owner's share. So again, if you just look at the last 12 months with Bloomington, and I think there's an impression that really the big numbers are being driven by the, by the truck stops. But in fact, you know, when you look at the data, it's, it's surprising to see, you know, that that's not, that's not necessarily the case. So when we talk about net terminal income in this past 12 month period, 310 million was actually played in the machines that we have. 27, 497, 27,497,000 is the net terminal income, which is a euphemism for that's how much the players lost in that process, okay? And I'm not buying or selling associated with this, but I think we just all need to have the facts associated with the math that this isn't just generating revenue for us. You know, at that 35%, which, you know, is the tax in the column where you'll see in the reports, anyone here can go and pull these reports. They're very easy to pull. The video game tax distribution on that 27.4 million loss is a little over 9.6 million and 8.2 million of that goes to the state of Illinois. And so in this last year, our retention was 1.4. And as you look also at the split. And as you look also at the split, and there are very specific laws around this, but the sliver actually that goes to the gaming operator into another, there's another organization, I forget the name of it, that has some slice of this pie, too. You know, you, you do see a little over, right around two-thirds of it leaves our community. So it's just, just for awareness. You know, there's all kinds of information out there that I'm sure people have already read that talks about some of the societal challenges. And, and I do agree with Councilmember Hendricks and several of his points about these transfers. You know, I'm trying to figure out one myself that I will ask you about, you know, after the meeting. But, you know, there are a lot of things out there that document unambiguously the demographics of people who develop gambling addiction. And that is well documented. And it is one with disparate impact of communities and people of color and lower-income people. ProPublica and many other organizations and the League of Women Voters actually has good documentation on this as well that I would encourage people to look at. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members who wish to speak?
I would just follow up, just with a point of information. We are, we're currently at 12 on the list. Is that correct?
Yes.
But as of July of 2024, when I last tried to bring this forward for a discussion, we had seven on that list and three were pending. So it's not a huge growth overall. That's been there for, for some time. So just wanted to make sure. And the final thing that I would say is, I definitely understand, yeah, the disparaging aspects of it. We currently have this in our community. If we'd like to look at not having gaming at all, which isn't something that I necessarily support, that would be one thing. But to create an imbalance that helps some over others also isn't fair.
Other members with questions? Madam Clerk, I don't expect you to, to have the answer to this, but just for all of us maybe here to think about. When you increase the numbers for licenses, you also make more available the ability to play, which means that the percentage of the pie is reduced to those that are looking at gaming for their businesses from the standpoint that people have more places to play. So from that standpoint, I hope everyone will consider that. Also, a question that you might be able to answer, Madam Clerk, is when was the last vote taken? And if this was explained earlier, my apologies, but when was the last vote that the Bloomington City Council acted on gaming the last time? And just a ballpark.
So what Councilmember Hendricks was referencing is there was a, he brought forward a council initiative. And that was in mid-last year. And the action did not move forward.
Prior to that, though, do you have any recollection of?
I didn't.
How long has it been in the way we're operating right now, I guess?
I don't. I was actually pulling it together and we didn't end up doing it. But I can definitely pull together a timeline and share it with council.
Thank you. Member Mosley?
Yeah, I was just going to ask a similar question earlier, Mayor, is with this topic, there were four options that the city manager mentioned. And so will we be receiving or when will the timeline be? Will we receive recommendations on one of those options to proceed? Because I know we all get calls about this.
Yeah, I, I think much like talking to council tonight to have the subject matter of this agenda, if you will, for the Committee of the Whole will be the same for moving forward with this topic. I think the four options or suggestions were from what others had brought forth that I've talked to from council members or from staff or from doing other research. So I hope to be able to reach back out and move forward in a discussion to see what the council wants to do next. Sit. Answer your question.
Yeah, that, that's fine. So you'll just continue to have discussions with us like the other topics, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? Member Ward?
Yeah, will those, will those discussions be made public? Or are those going to be sort of off-the-record kind of discussions? Because in the past, when we've had Committee of the Whole meetings, we've often gone around the table and given staff direction based on, on consensus that, that we offer in this context out in the open.
Sure.
As opposed to behind closed doors.
Absolutely. I can't speak to what you've done in the past, but I can speak to the present and the future. It will certainly be transparent and it will be something that's open to further discussion and any input from council, whether that's a member initiative or anything else as we discuss the issue as, as we move forward. The place to start, though, I, talking to council members was tonight to have a subject matter hearing or Committee of the Whole hearing. And that's what we're doing this evening. Any other questions?
Mayor, if I?
Member Scott?
Yeah, just, just, I'll be super quick. Along those lines, if you're interested in what, you know, folks are thinking, I'll just, I'll go ahead and share now. I'm certainly, you know, concerned about the, the effect this has and the, the cost. But I'm not for removing 60 licenses, especially when we're up against another municipality that has much, much more. And I don't like the idea of us putting a firm thumb on the scale of the free market. I recognize that other licenses would spread out the, the income that an individual business would take. But again, I, I don't like us essentially giving a subsidy to, to certain areas or certain businesses.
I appreciate that. And I would leave the council with this in regards to gaming right now. What we presented tonight of some options are options. If you have other options and ideas, as we're getting discussion here tonight, we'll move forward with that and make sure that it's in the public domain when we have something that we think we're ready to, to vote on. Any other questions? Comments?
Mayor, if I could really quick, I was just going.
Oh, I'm sorry.
To answer Councilmember Hendricks' question. So, and this is, I say this because I, we have a manual system. So I have no licensing system that I like, can like run a report and tell me easy things about licensing. So for my quick review is July 12th of 2023, we removed Bray's, which is Empire Coffee. And I think that's our last one that we did.
So to clarify, they are still on the current Illinois Gaming Report for this year, the report I ran for 2024 to 2025?
Empire Coffee.
And Bray's?
So it's not, the DBA has changed to Empire Coffee, but they do still have a video gaming license.
Okay, I guess I, maybe I just misunderstood what you just said then.
He was asking what the last license that we approved for a new license was. And it was, like I said, from my quick review of our audit of the file is Bray's Empire Coffee.
Thank you.
Yeah, maybe also to just provide some additional information. I think it was in 2019 that the council took the number of licenses from 52 and added eight. So it's been a number of years ago since we've increased or the councils increased the number of licenses. And then it was in 2023 when the change was made to address the contractual or the, the ones that come in through an economic development agreement. So we can get you some more details on that. But it looks like 2019 is when the change came from 52 to 60.
Thank you. Any other members? If not, thank you very much. And we will move on to C for another presentation and discussion, which is regarding the subject of meetings such as this, of Committee of the Whole and a schedule by council now. This is brought forth from other members of the council over the course of the last couple of months that have approached me and asked about trying to look at the future of these meetings, scheduling the meetings, overall purpose, et cetera. And in doing so and trying to come back to council with some ideas, we do have, I believe, from our legal department that has been, a proposal that has been sent. I believe everyone has seen that. And Mr. Juergens may have some comments in regards to the process in which to move forward if the council would like to discuss that further down the road. Yep.
Yes, so if there's a desire to change the meeting schedule and do away with the Committee of the Whole, certainly you can do whatever you, you would like to do here. One proposal would be, though, to, to try and have, if we need to have a special meeting, that we would try and target the third Monday of the month so that it's more in tune with people being used to coming to these meetings. And we would try and schedule if we have a, you know, different topics we just need to discuss, we would try and target that third Monday for a special meeting. We also have provisions in our city code that talk about work sessions. And so we might try to utilize those more. They've been used in the past. We have now used them in recent years. But it could be, for example, starting at 5:30 to talk about a topic and then starting the regular meeting at 6:00. So this is really the pleasure of the council. That was just one idea we worked on with legal in case you wanted to see something in writing.
Any members that have comment? Member Ward?
Yeah, I don't know who these council members are who are wanting to, to do away with the Committee of the Whole meetings or have fewer of them. I wish that they would speak up. The people of my ward elected me to do the work of the city. And we have work to do. And so if anything, I would suggest that we have more Committee of the Whole meetings and maybe we wouldn't go until 8 o'clock every night when we have them. Clearly, tonight, we did a lot of work. And we wouldn't have perhaps had to do quite as much work tonight if we had had last month's Committee of the Whole meeting. So I don't think canceling the Committee of the Whole meetings is the way to go. I think doing the work that we were elected to do is the way to go.
Member Mosley?
Yeah, I'll, I'll echo that. And, and I appreciate what you just said about special meetings. And I was called by a few members about, oh, Michael, you said we should cancel these. I, I think I said that in just, and it may have been misinterpreted because we were coming from a service and traveling. And I just made a comment, I may more, had spent more time in my car getting here than I did in the meeting. And then I know, like even last week, we had a meeting that lasted 15 minutes, right? I want to make sure like now that we use this meeting for what its purpose. And this has been the most topics that we've had in the Committee of the Whole since I've been on council. And so I would like to keep it, especially if we're going to fill the topics with things that the city staff, you, Mayor, will want to come before us or things that we've presented or discussed with you that can be used in these forums. And so I hope that it wasn't misinterpreted that I wanted us to cancel this meeting. And we just have two council meetings that, but if, if there's a need, right? This meeting should be canceled. And we should, you should have the authority to cancel this meeting, but we should use it for business.
Any other members? Okay, I appreciate that, that input. And I think the objective is to try and do the most efficient manner we can with the meetings and the scheduling of those meetings when it comes to content. So I appreciate your input, everyone else's input. Any other comments on that topic?
Yeah, I'll just.
Member Kearns?
You know, I think tonight is a really good example. Like Member Ward commented on that we did a lot of work. And it was because of times that things were brought to vote that maybe weren't quite ready or we weren't prepared or we wanted more conversation with the community. And so I think, yeah, I want to echo what my council members have said that I think these meetings are important. And I think maybe putting more, you know, having it be more strategic about how we're moving things from discussions to committees of the whole to a vote. And so I think, yeah, like I, I, I don't think any one, any one of us want to have a meeting for the sake of a meeting. But we've done some really good work tonight and I wouldn't want to see that be reduced.
Thank you very much. And speaking of meetings, we have an executive session that is due next. And if the council members believe that we can defer that because of the time that we put in this evening, I'll be happy to see that we defer that to our next city council meeting. If I can get some input from members here. If they prefer to go on to executive session, we can. If you prefer that we carry that over to next month's meeting, we can do that. Member Ward, looks like you want to talk.
Well, don't we have a city manager's report first on the agenda?
We do, but we're going to resolve the issue of whether we're going to go into executive session or not. So with that, Chris?
I, I would just say I don't have any problem moving it a week. But given the trial dates, October 6th, we need to talk about it before next month. We should, either tonight or next week would be fine.
Okay. So is there a feeling one way or the other about moving into executive session tonight to go further or not? Members who wish to speak? Member Motney?
We're here and it sounds like it's a time-sensitive matter. I suggest that we just continue with the agenda as it's been established.
Okay. Consensus of all, okay? And now, thank you for that. We can move to our city manager's report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Again, I just real quickly want to share that we've developed a new, something new for our website regarding our sidewalks. This council is continuing to put a lot of money into infrastructure. A lot of that is also going into sidewalks. We have a lot of work going on and we've got a new tool that we're adding to our website. So you can see, we've, we've split it into some different sections. You can go to this and you can see if your neighborhood is currently getting work done on sidewalks when maybe you're going to expect your sidewalk to get done, when they're going to be done and when they're going to move on to the next section. So just wanted to share that we're adding a new tool, trying to again, provide some transparency on sidewalks, which we all know we need to get our head above water on. But we're excited that we really feel like we're going to do a lot this year. Sue?
We're starting in six right now.
Yeah, starting in ward six right now. So section, section, I'm sorry. Sections, not wards. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager. And I will forego any mayor's report out of respect for time so we can move into the executive session unless there's any other topics that members of the council would like to share before we do so. Okay, thank you. So at this point, we're going to ask for the motion, motion to enter into executive session per Section 2C11 of the Number 5 Illinois compiled statutes to discuss pending litigation. And I would ask for a motion in which to do that.
A motion to go to executive session?
Motion by our member Strazza. And is there a second?
Second?
Second by Member Ken. With that, if you call, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Kearns?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes.
Councilmember Motney?
Yes.
Councilmember Dandenberger?
Yes.
Councilmember Strazza?
Yes.
Councilmember Hendricks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
Thank you. As we clear the room, if there's any members that need to take a.
Okay, so we can. We need another motion to go back into regular session to conclude. So if I can get that motion again.
Return to open session and adjourn?
From Member Ward a second?
Second.
From Member Strazza?
I'll call it quick. Councilmember Kearns?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes.
Councilmember Motney?
Yes.
Councilmember Danenberger?
Yep.
Councilmember Strazza?
Yes.
Councilmember Hendrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Have a good rest of your evening.